Order nine oh seven uh seven oh seven uh roll call please.
Council member Bernard.
Here.
Council member Oisa Martinez. Mayor Proton Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Alperano.
Here.
Council member Mendoza for the record.
Please staff, please please. Ready, begin.
I declare the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which sustains, my nation, I am in God and with all his blessings.
Just read any adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, there are another questions.
About city attorney report on closed session actions.
The city council that in closed session discussed the public employee performance valuation from city manager. Uh no report. The council discussed one item of anticipated litigation, uh direction was given to council. The council discussed the old post office property negotiation regarding price and terms. Uh price and terms were given to the negotiator. The council discussed um the Mayfield litigation is listed in item D and direction was given to council.
Thank you. Moving on to comments, there's time limit of three minutes for anyone wishing to address uh city council on these matters. And so if that matter is not appearing on the agenda, if you wish to address city council concerning any item within the city council's jurisdiction, prepare to be acknowledged by the mayor at that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves right to put a time limit of three minutes for each person's presentation. And if requested a longer presentation, be submitted to the city folks uh office in writing forty eight hours before the meeting. And I do have one request for Ms. Lina Canis.
Need me to, you need me to say my address.
Yes, please for the record.
Hello, my name is Liliana Canis. I live at five eighty two Musqueach Street, near Imperial. Okay. Uh good evening, ladies and gentlemen of our governing board. My name is Liliana Canis. I'm not only an Imperial citizen, but I also serve on the Imperial School Board. Currently, I am the board president. I am here because I am greatly concerned with losing our high school SRO officer Ayena. Officer Ayena is an amazing officer who has built a wonderful rapport with students and staff alike. This is most certainly not easy to do, especially at the high school. What is more concerning is that as a district, we not, we do not have a say as to who is picked for this job. Yet our school district pays ninety four thousand dollars plus overtime. A hundred and ninety days, uh two hundred and thirty days is eighty three percent of the salary, which is the majority. As a school district, we work closely with the city and try to have a good working relationship. Most recently, our superintendent was told it was department policy to move officers around. After concern that he had no proof to show us as a board, he contacted the police chief and was told, Brian, there is no policy, I'm just choosing to do this. It begs me to ask the question, where is the transparency? I am a law enforcement advocate and would hate to lose Imperial PD within our schools. However, we are currently speaking to ICSO and looking at our options. I would rather continue working together. I urge you as a governing board to do what is right. Allow us to have a say as to who we want as our SRO in our schools. Include us in your interview panels for SRO. Please leave small town politics out of decisions that affect our students. I urge you to please remember the old saying, if it's not broken, why fix it? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Yes, welcome to our, this is not public video at all. Uh I have two things. I I've lived here in Imperial for over thirty years and I continually notice discrepancy, I think, between the parks. I keep reading in the paper, this park got this grad, this park is getting lighting, this park is doing whatever. The park at Sunset, uh Rodeo and Chisel is like the forgotten park, I feel like. Most of the time it looks very abandoned over there. There's no upkeep, there's no maintenance. Just before they start going their baseball, their T-ball, they go in and rake the dirt. And the poor kids have to play over there. It's very unsafe at night to walk over there. The lighting is sufficient. And if you go down the street by the side of the park of Chisel, the road is just, it's a mess. I don't know if that's on your big paving plans in the future, but if it isn't, you need to add that because the road is like a rubber trying to get down that street. So if you would consider maybe a grant or lighting, whatever updates that park can have, because for the entire time I've lived there, the park has been a mess. And it keeps getting forgotten. I keep reading in the paper thinking, okay, here's another park update. Maybe they get something. No, it's never mentioned. So I would like to have that maybe added into consideration for two topics for council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other focus comments? Thank you, Nick. Moving on to our presentations, we've got a proclamation for National Nurses Week. Hi. Alright, so I have a proclamation and I'll read the proclamation and then we'll go down from the front, take some pictures. So it is a City of Imperial proclamation, National Nurses Week says, whereas City of Imperial recognizes and is the indispensable role of nurses playing our community tirelessly, dedicating themselves to the well-being of our residents and whereas nurses are essential members of America, healthcare workforce who provide care, care through every stage of life, working with patients at their most intimate and vulnerable moments. And whereas the, this year's National Nurses Week is celebrated May sixth through May twelfth and is part of a larger National Nurses Month, which is celebrated the entire month of May. And whereas this year's theme, Nurses Make the Difference, honors the incredible nurses who embody compassion, care and healing in every healthcare setting. The theme is accomplished by the campaign Nurses Light Up the Sky, uh where landmarks across the country will be lit up to celebrate nurses and rally support for all they do. And whereas the City of Imperial City Council wishes to express their heartfelt gratitude to nurses for their tireless efforts, their compassion and their unwavering dedication to the health and well-being of our community. Now therefore, I, the mayor, Robert Alperano, on behalf of the Imperial City Council, do hereby proclaim May sixth through the twelfth, twenty twenty four, National Nurses Week in the City of Imperial. Passed and adopted on the first day of May, twenty twenty four, at a regular city council meeting. Alright, thank you. There more nurses, any nurses? Nope.
No, just you, just you.
Just you.
I can't wait to all take pictures. And you're like the big nurse.
The big nurse.
One, two. Yeah. She's gonna take care of you.
Yeah. While I have a travel. Well, let's see our little back there. See your body. One, two, three. Because I'm, I'm skating. Oh, and better you said it. Give me one. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you, sugar. Sorry. So I have another proclamation for uh Professional Municipal Clerks Week. So with this one, the City of Imperial proclaims Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Um and we'll, Shields will be on this one. Uh municipal clerks play a vital role by being a professional link between citizens and local government. And whereas cities, uh whereas the dedicated professionals, professionals tirelessly serve our residents, mayor, city council, city manager and all administrative departments ensuring the smooth functioning and of administrative process, record keeping and public services. And whereas International Institute of Municipal Clerks sponsors the fifty fifth annual Municipal Clerks Week from May fifth to May eleventh, twenty twenty four, aiming to raise public awareness about the essential services provided by municipal clerks worldwide. And whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the city council through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops and annual meetings of their state, uh provincial, county and international professional organizations. And whereas it is the most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of all municipal clerks and further extend appreciation to our city clerk Christina Shields for her dedication to our city. Now therefore, I, the mayor, Alperano, on behalf of the Imperial City Council, do hereby proclaim May fifth through the eleventh, twenty twenty four, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week in the City of Imperial. Passed and adopted on this first day of May, twenty twenty four, at a regular meeting of the Imperial City Council.
You're special. You're the best city clerk we've ever had.
Wow. You wanted one with everybody, you know, you don't want to.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You think I'm. You think I'm kidding though, you know, I'm saying that you're the best city clerk that I've ever had. But I'm really not. So you do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the, the hard work and I know we've had those conversations and uh you've asked, how am I doing? You know, to show up to, to your meeting and everything sitting here that we need or we think we might need is great.
Oh, exactly.
Uh so we, we, we appreciate it. We really do appreciate the hard work and this does not go unnoticed, so.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Make it nicer for us.
Yeah. No, and I always tell, like when, like your agendas are always so out on time and the minutes are posted and updated and you do such a good job of it. It's really organized now and as somebody who like, if I have to spend like five minutes looking for something, I'm irritated and the fact that I can always go in five minutes now.
That's great.
Thank you, I do appreciate that. I can also attest to the fact that when, when you don't see it for Friday, right? Where she's gathering and doing all these last minute things all the time for every agenda. She's really good. Lots of work.
Thank you. Tucker, anything? Or Jack? Alright, so moving on to eight three, a presentation by Imperial Valley Small Business Development Center.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, thank you first of all for allowing me to present. Oh. Thank you first of all for the opportunity to present today. My name is Liliana Sainz Keyill and I am serving the Small Business Development Center in Imperial Valley as their central manager. Um I want to take this opportunity to speak about the services that we provide at the Small Business Development Center and to highlight some of our achievements for twenty twenty three. Um I know we're a few months into the year, um but again, I'm very um grateful for the opportunity to, to speak to you about our center. So the Small Business Development Center became a part of the Imperial County's Workforce and Economic Development uh in January of twenty twenty two. So we've been with the county for two years and I think that it is a great addition to the services that they provide through their workforce and economic development. Um more specifically, in the summer of um last year, the county put together and opened its doors to the Imperial County Business Development Center. Or so I think that's coming, which doesn't have an official name on the building, but we are open for services. So under this building, there is two cap, there's three county departments. Two of them really focused on providing services for the small business community, such as the Small Business Development Center, SBDC, and then our business services team. We uh want this space to be utilized by our community, our business owners throughout the county, not just in El Central. And really see it as a place where they can access everything related to businesses. The building and I do invite all of you guys to visit our building. The building has state of the art training rooms. We have a large and a small training room, fully equipped. We allow business owners to use this for any onboarding or any training events that they might have. Um we have individualized business incubator spaces as well. There is no charge for any, for the use of any of these spaces. Business owners can come in and then just utilize um the space to work, especially we encourage those that work or have a home-based business and maybe just need a quiet place to work from to make use of these spaces as well. We also have a conference room and then we have two private meeting rooms. And um we are often reserving these for, again, business owners that are looking to maybe do like an interview or go through any type of hiring process to again, take advantage of us, of our facilities that we have available. It's just to recap a little bit of twenty twenty three and what we were able to achieve. I'm very proud of these numbers because we are a very small team here in Imperial Valley, SBDC. So in twenty twenty three, we were able to post our year by assisting thirty five new businesses to start. We served over eight hundred clients. We helped create o- o- over eighty five jobs, assisted in the retention of over fourteen hundred jobs, provided over two hundred and ninety six training event, um over six thousand people in attendance, capital infusion, over six hundred and thirty nine, and then of course, an eight million dollar overall economic impact to our. We are obviously not able to do this by ourselves, as I mentioned, we are very small team. But we do have the support of a bigger network. And what does that mean for our community? That means additional resources that perhaps are out of the reach of what we can assist with them when it comes to um our capacity as a team. So aside from being part of the Imperial County's Workforce and Economic Development, the SBDC belongs to the San Diego and Imperial Valley Network. And with this network, we are a team of ten different centers. Some of these centers are also like ours, who would consider ourselves a general center. But then we also have specialty centers, such as our North SBDC, who specializes in government contracting and certification for small businesses. Um our East County, who focuses in manufacturing and cybersecurity. And then of course, our Brain and our Connect SBDC, who deal with innovation and technology and are able to help clients who are looking for any type of assistance in those area and to include patents and trademarks as well. And then of course, our Export SBDC, who will see our clients after they've been in business for at least two year and can really prove that they're ready to export their goods internationally. Some of the services that we provide can be divided into these categories. We provide individualized business mentorship, workshops and training, certificate programs, networking opportunities, and then we also conduct community outreach and engagement. And then some of our specialized um mentorships, these are just, it's not a comprehensive list, but it is a list of some of the topics that we normally see clients in and what we can assist clients with, such as business structure information, business startups and planning, um access to capital, whether it's loans or any type of grants that are available to them, booking and accounting, cybersecurity, digital marketing, e-commerce and online sales, to include website development, financial analysis, human resource, business certification, government contracting, intellectual property and international trade. Our workshops are designed to assist our clients in both English and in Spanish to serve our community better. We also hold our training both live and on demand. On demand means that they're pre-recorded and our clients are able to access those on their own time. And then we provide these trainings both virtually and in person. Um some of the trainings that we've had from the beginning of this year have included how to understand sales taxes, how to begin a food truck business, um how to create a sales plan. And then this week, we are celebrating small, National Small Business Week. So part of our celebration, we were able to put together a couple of short trainings to um help our business owners continue their education and their journey to through entrepreneurship. So we started Monday with Legal Foundations. Um Tuesday, we did Tax Tips and Truth in collaboration with the I R F. We had U S Bank help us today with completing a training on banking one-on-one and the importance of um understanding, the fundamentals of understanding a good relationship with your learning institutions. And then tomorrow, we're finishing up our training sessions with Planning for Success and how to develop a um a good business plan before getting started. Um for the month of June, we're looking to begin a QuickBooks series and then a business management series as well. Our certificate programs differ a little from our regular trainings and workshops. Um we are not an educational institution, but we have great collaborations with some of our local educational institutions and other partnerships. So for example, um we are looking to develop in collaboration with our Professional Development Skills Department through San Diego State University, our Young Entrepreneurship Academy, which is um set to launch during the summer. This program is meant to help high school and young adult um with the understanding of how to create a business for themselves, from concept to creation. We also have a Boots to Business, which is meant to assist our veterans, military and military spouses. We just held one this last month and we are scheduled to hold one um September, I think it's September eighteenth. I do have a flyer, I'll pass that information along. We try to hold these events at least twice a year to help our veterans um navigate through the process of starting their business. With the collaboration with the Mexican consulate, Colexico Office, we will begin our Mexicana Emprende Program. This program was rooted with the purpose of helping domestic violence victims have a way to escape their situation and obviously create um income for themselves. That has mutated a little bit, now it's open to any woman who really wants to participate. who really wants to participate. The training is in Spanish. It is a twelve-week program, but it is a certified program. We also will begin this, actually tomorrow is the first day of our Business Startup from Concept to Creation. This is an eight-week program for startup businesses. And then for those that are already in existence, we do have our Business Financial Literacy Program. That one, we do ask that the business is already in existence because we help them understand their own finances, such as profit and loss statement, balance sheet, and cash flow. For networking opportunities, these are probably some of my favorites. And one of them that we've started since the beginning of this year is our Women in Business Networking Event. We understand that although women are one of the highest growing group of entrepreneurships in the United States, they're also the ones with the highest success rate and the ones that are funded by some of our members at a higher percentage. So we thought it was very important to create a safe space for women to come together and not only talk about their business, their business ideas, but really make it a space where they can collaborate, where they can network among each other and they can support each other to grow together within our community. That program, we hold it once a month. It's the first Friday of every month. We will be holding one for the month of May this Friday. You are welcome to attend, whether you're a man or a woman. Everyone is welcome. We also had the opportunity to collaborate with Caltrans District Office eleven in the month of March to bring the first and hopefully annual procurement and resource there. We had over a hundred and fifty existing businesses in attendance that were looking to take advantage of some of the government contracting opportunities that are here locally. We have a idea to bring a business in digital world marketing by the end of this year, which will focus on helping businesses understand the need to have a digital presence and have them also be instructed on how to stay safe when it comes to the digital world and provide some cybersecurity training for them as well. And then we are also looking to have a business expo. This is something that we do as a network and they're usually held in San Diego. Give them the opportunity for them to, for business owners to be, acquire additional resources, but also highlight some of our business owners that are part of our SBDC, San Diego Imperial Valley Network. I would love to see that come to fruition here in the Imperial Valley and give us the opportunity to highlight some of our local business owners as well. And then for community engagement, we are pretty much anywhere we are invited to. We hold a lot of presentations. One of our favorites is the high schools. We are invited to participate at a lot of high school events. There is a lot of trainings that we do for, when collaboration with C E T and I V R P to kind of speak to the youth and the young adults of entrepreneurship. We will attend any outreach event that we're invited to. And then this year, again, we also started incorporating SBDC open hours in our more rural communities. So once a month, one of our business survivors will go out to Calipatria, Raleigh, Collexico, and this month we will be including Tokyo as well. I just want to end my presentation by, not that you guys don't know, but there is no city like Imperial when it comes to putting on market events. One of the things that we tell our clients when we begin this journey on helping them start their business is validate your business, validate your business and make sure that your product, whether it's a service, whether it's a good, is something that's desirable in our community. So we always encourage them to participate at as many local events as possible. The market events for Imperial are something that we encourage all of our clients to take advantage of. These are just a few pictures that I had the opportunity to snap in one of the market events here in the city of Imperial, just highlighting some of the businesses that we work with. And it really ranges, you know, male, female, young, older, it really doesn't matter. The spirit of entrepreneurship is strong and thriving in our community. And we want to thank the city of Imperial for supporting that. We are looking to have a further and stronger collaboration with every city. So I do encourage you to please reach out to your local SBDC center if you have any questions. And again, I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
No, but I love your guys' program. I really think our market days, you know, everybody thinks of it as like this big, you know, festival event that we have, but like I always look at it through the lens of it's a really cool opportunity for small business entrepreneurs to come in and, you know, start their business. So it's really cool to see that you guys actually help them and encourage them for that. So, thank you.
No, I appreciate that. I just had a conversation last weekend with a business that actually started to showcase their business at our market days and now has a giant storefront. It was telling their success, success stories to the other businesses around it. It's like that they didn't know where to go, what to do, and they're like, start at the local, local markets, local stuff like that, where people will know your brand and know what you have. So, thank you very much.
No, thank you. Thank you again for providing these opportunities. There's a lot of business owners that don't know where to start or just because of financial situations need to start very small or need to first validate their, their business. So events like the ones that Imperial holds provide that perfect opportunity for them to get out into the community, begin to participate, get their products out there and get them known. So, thank you guys for, for those chances too.
One last question for you. Is there membership for businesses for this or?
No. So again, just to make that very clear, we're part of the county resources that we have for our business community. Everything that we provide is completely free to our clients, whether it's a training, whether it's mentorship, networking opportunities, everything we do with our clients is completely a hundred percent free of charge.
I appreciate that. And thank you for the work you do for businesses.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, moving on to consent agenda. All items appearing in the consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council with one motion without discussion. Should any council member or any other person request that any item be considered separately, that item will be taken up at time as determined by the mayor.
Also move to approve the consent agenda.
Got a motion by Ms. Burnworth, second by Ms. Martinez. We'll call vote, please.
Councilmember Burnworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Abesina Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Alperona?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. And I know we have Rep. Form I I D. in regards to item B three, they've prepared. Do you want to say anything on that or you're good?
Good afternoon.
Don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, no problem. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Alperona and number six, the council. My name is Leah Nandis. I'm the Governor Affairs Representative with Imperial Region District. First and foremost, I would like to say thank you for the approval of this letter of support. Basically, the Imperial Region District is applying for a V O E grant. The name of the grant is called the Great Resilience and Innovation Partnerships Grant. Again, for the Department of Energy and we're basically going to be using this money to create an advanced distribution management system, which is a software hardware system designed to enhance the efficiency of our electrical grid. The application requires community engagement, which is the reason why we, we connected with our stakeholders here in Imperial Valley as well as in Coachella Valley so that they can provide their support. Because with their support, we could definitely increase the opportunity of getting this money from the federal government. We basically connected with, you know, besides the city of Imperial. We also connected with all the municipalities within Imperial Valley, Coachella Valley. We also connected with the County of Riverside, Imperial County as well, our federal elected officials as well at our state and some of our tribes within Coachella Valley and in Hetchon as well. So we basically connected with basically everyone requesting their support and, and on behalf of I V, I just want to say thank you so much for your support. And if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to.
Appreciate it. Anytime.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's taken. All right, moving on to action items, starting right with C one, award a contract for the preparation of payment management systems on the R F P number P two zero two four dash zero one with Mr. Mora with Community Development.
Mr. Mayor and Council members staff, release that your proposal for the payment management system. This is a street by street survey to determine the current level of payment condition and recommend any course of action and timeline in regards to maintenance and rehab for all the streets within the city. We receive only one proposal and the contractor that submitted the proposal is the same one as the one prepared one. Staff recommends award of a contract to I V M S in the amount of thirty-four thousand seven hundred and five dollars. Ask any questions?
Questions?
No.
Where are we with the current twenty thirteen plan?
So on the twenty thirteen plan, we were able to post secure funding of twenty fourteen. And Mr. Brown, we're just funding to an L T A farm and some of the local streets. So now this is the next phase, which hopefully we get one.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion.
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Tucker, second by Ms. Burnworth. Please vote.
Councilmember Burner?
Yes.
Councilmember Abesina Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Alperona?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Look forward to this. And think it'll address some of our issues. Yeah. Moving on to item C two, award the construction contract for seven, ten, fourteen, street rehabilitation. Project bid number two zero two four dash zero one. And authorize the twenty-five percent contingency with Mr. Mora.
Mr. Mayor and council members. As you may already know, the council director staff, it's one of the outside projects, seven, ten, four, four. So we receive only one bid from the year. After reviewing the packages, we recommend toward the contract to roll, but excluding a portion of this couple of work, which is seven street between D and E. The reason why is because L P B funds haven't been cleared until June, which will be bringing that to you to work. We're working to get the documents ready so we can release that by the time we meet the contract. Seamless, to price the bill almost at the same time. Staff recommends a word of a contract for three million nine hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars fifty cents and a price to be placed.
Is this going to be done before school goes back in session?
We are, so with everything that we have in place, we should be able to be made by before the school starts. Yes. So with, with this, we're going to be moving forward with fourteen, ten, and then we'll be that.
Seven at the end?
Seven at the end.
Okay.
But we're going to be able to draw mostly underground, so we're getting ready for that small portion of the project.
And with that additional funds that we're going to be going after that, it would total to the four point two that we have here?
It will be total, that is correct. We'll be a little bit more, I think, we're going to have to add in a hundred and one thousand bucks.
And where, where does additional funds come from, you said?
L P B, I C T C.
Long time come. Any questions for the council?
Excited.
I think we all are.
But yeah, I don't want to. Really, it's like, we're giving the parents and their kids to school to Ben Holt's, a new street, and I don't want to hold them up there.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's like the one that, it's like, it's like a first, Mike. It's like an alley. Yeah.
And then, and then, first one, but this type, some of the funding.
You're just saving the best one for last, you know?
That's it. And so once this is approved, when are we looking to start?
So we're looking to start the ASAP.
Tomorrow?
Which is up, we have.
That's, that's quick.
Early June.
Okay.
Soon as possible.
What do you guys still have pending? I was gonna. What do you guys still have pending to get the project moving?
We haven't, for this portion of the, we have nothing pending for the fourth of seven street between D and E, which has been cleared from I C T C to I C T C. Very similar quality documentation today, who will estimate the right of way instead of environmental. But there are probably, it's until June.
So we can't break ground and start moving forward on, on, uh,
So when are you guys?
Ten fourteen?
When is it going to go over the notice to proceed?
So we have ten days to provide as well all the condition. As soon as we get that, we're going to be noticed to proceed that basically. We're working casually for early June, hopefully it can start later.
Okay. I'll take late, late.
Early June. I mean, I'm just saying, well.
Time frame to go to school.
I'm like, if we can get it done during summer break. If not, I'll forward all my calls for missing parents to you.
Awesome. Look forward to it. Any other questions for the council?
Thank you. Miss one.
I'll entertain a motion if any of you would like.
Well, I'll make a motion, but I did write down, I know it's three million nine hundred some, what was the amount?
The total's going to be four point, uh, four million.
I know, but you wanted that. Are we going to prove the whole amount today or break it down to three point nine? What have we said?
Uh, we're.
What are we approving today?
Three million nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars.
That's my motion.
Two million nine hundreds?
Thank you.
Nine?
Six eighty-three.
Nine, six eighty cents. All right. That's it. All right. That's your motion?
Yes.
All right. I got a motion from Mr. Tucker. So second from Ms. Abesina Martinez, please vote.
Councilmember Burner?
Upstate.
Councilmember Abesina Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Alperona?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero with one abstain from Councilmember Burner.
Thank you. Moving on to item C three, approval of two facility use agreements with Imperial Unified School District. And that'll be with Ms. Victoria Peta with Recreation Order.
So good to be here, Mayor Alperona and Council. As some of you may have been aware, we do use a regular school gymnasium and a school pool to host our summer recreation and athletics program. So we do enter into a facility use agreement with the district for these two facilities. So we are discussing with the council through the facilities for the summer twenty twenty-four season. And I'll send three questions if you have.
Questions? My comments probably would be appropriate, but I'll make a motion to approve that, number one.
Second.
Do you want to do two?
Want to do? Do we have to do separate or?
Do we do separate or do it together?
Yeah.
Together. Okay. One and.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Tucker for item one and two.
I have a question. Were they able to, were you guys able to schedule in for the Sea Lion swim team to be able to use the pool as well?
Um, so we did have a conversation with Sea Lion and so they will be continuing with their normal practices. We do have them scheduled off Thursday as well. They do have that whole day, that whole afternoon blocked out for their meets and stuff. And we've been in constant communication with them.
Perfect. That's great. There's about a hundred kids that are on that swim teams.
Yeah. Our goal is to just get all the kids in the water.
Perfect. Yeah, and I know they're expecting to have more kids this summer just because Raleigh's pool is down. And so I think they're expecting more swim kids to go on that swim team, so.
And then we were told Calipat's pool is not used for recreation at all.
They don't have a rec swim team.
And so their pool is not open up for like daily swimming. There's only competitive swimming, so. All right, got a motion from Mr. Tucker.
Clear.
Second by Ms. Burnworth, please vote.
Councilmember Burner?
Yes.
Councilmember Abesina Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Alperona?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Item C four, approved resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty, accepting the F Y twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, state citizen's option for public safety, cops, funding and expenditure plan. That goes to.
Getting mayor council, this is a re-project, we're going to see it approved, right? Of a hundred thousand dollars of.
Of a hundred thousand dollars of payments. And so the original uh approval was for uh use for the animal control facility, which was not approved. So this is a proposal to reprogram the allocation of that money to the other items. Two of the items have already been approved in the uh ballistic vessel, livestock machine. And then the addition of the bodyboard cameras and the drones have been added to complete up that. Any questions?
What's gonna happen with the dog? Now, anything or still sub out or?
So so I know that there was a a temporary shade that was being looked at at one point, and I don't know if any. We have have moved forward on that, but we're still worried with the Humane Society, their existing contract to shelter animals. And so what we do have right now, it does not have a shade, but it's only temporary, and so animals can be moved to the Humane Society.
I'll make a motion, Deputy.
Got a motion from Mr. Tucker?
Second.
Second by Ms. Berner, please vote.
Councilmember Berner?
Yes.
Councilmember Basa Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Obrana?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item C five, receive and file the Q three quarterly budget report on March twenty, March thirty first, twenty twenty four. And adopt resolution number twenty twenty four dash nineteen, approving the third quarter budget amendment by Mr. Victor Bunkakis.
Good evening, Mayor Councilmember. Uh, this is our resolution to for the city council to approve the amendments and amendments that this whole budget ending at uh March thirty first. Um, with this, I do have a presentation. You have you have the complete package for uh the entire quarter, so you want me to present prior to reporting, so I'll go.
Yes, please.
And I think uh Mr. Rivera is coming us via Zoom as well. I don't know if you can hear me, John.
I can hear you, Victor.
I don't know if you got the mics are out. I don't know if you can hear me.
I I can hear you.
Alright, thank you, John.
You're good.
So, starting, um, it leaves three months already since. Um, so this is the Q three report. Um, as you can see, our budgetary net revenue for Q three. Um, recurring at a balance. Um, we have the history for the Q one and Q two, so the update for this uh third quarter. It's a net revenue, uh which. The actual total balance of the amount of the budget is not changing. We are amending, amending, amending the revenues and expenses by uh revenue by a total of hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars and three hundred dollars. Hundred eighty seven, three hundred less, and expenditure increasing a hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars, which I'll go into detail in a later slide. Actually, I'm very impressed, though. Uh, for the Q three, uh, the general decrease is, like I mentioned, is a hundred eighty seven uh hundred eighty seven thousand three hundred. Uh, after several revenues line items were adjusted, most notable, we picked up another uh eight hundred eighty eighty thousand dollars increase uh from auto sales. I know Q two, we had a downfall on that one, so uh Q three looked a lot better, so we we recuperated uh eighty thousand from the two twenty five that we had decreased uh over Q two. For uh expenditures, we are increasing a hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred to cover the cost of uh Redden Associates. As uh Mr. January is still consulting uh for the city. And finally, the final adjustment will be uh six hundred, six thousand six hundred dollars for an AC project for buildings and grounds, which is a cer- a zero net budget. As we're moving just uh monies from one department to the other. And you can feel free to interrupt at any time on the presentation. Uh, moving up to the next slide, um. So for Q three, uh, we basically are not having any uh net revenue change. Because as I mentioned, we did adjust all the revenues and expenses, so at the end of the day, we're still at uh balanced budget. The impact for this quarter is zero, like on previous uh quarters, we have a little bit of difference, positive or negative. So this one, once we, since we're doing, since we're doing our budget right now, we're also taking into account like the forecast of revenues for current uh fiscal year. So it's it's a little bit more clear uh during future. For cash basis, um, cash basis uh for the third quarter, uh, is the net revenue calculated cash inflows versus outflows into the general fund. Um, our goal always to be on the positive side, so for Q three, our cash basis is positive or one point one, one point hundred, one million, hundred sixty four thousand three hundred dollars. Uh, this does not include the four million we transferred out during Q two for internal service funds, which is the vehicle replacement, the. Forgot the two. Vehicle replacement, the.
And the I T fund.
I think that's correct. Thank you, John. Uh, for emergency reserves, uh, for Q three, we continue to grow in our reserves. Um, after the four million transfers I was talking about for the internal services funds uh from first quarter. Our general fund reserves currently stand at five point four million for Q three, which represents a thirty two percent of the operating budget for current fiscal year. This is uh a growth of seven percent from previous quarter. So we went up uh basically nine hundred thousand from previous quarter. Uh, the thirty two percent annual operating service equivalent of approximately four months of general fund expenditures. Well above the two months uh recommended by the G F O A, which stands for the Federal Financial Officers Association. Moving on, uh, the purchase order and encircuses, um. This uh, this thing, uh, we have brought this up, um, prior to meeting on the board, John has been working with the purchase order and encircuses. Uh, currently, we don't have a system in place uh internally, uh, but we are engaged with uh various demonstrations and providers for new enterprise resource planning system, which we call E R Ps. Which uh will give us the much needed update for city finance, payroll, H R, contract management, and purchase orders. So we have been meeting with the different vendors currently, uh, I'll keep the names out of the presentation. Uh, even as of yesterday, we still have meetings to see the proposals and their money, the what they're offering.
Question for you, Victor, on this purchase order, uh, this enterprise resource planning, um, would this do what we're talking about, Mr. Rita, about uh having uh cost allocated for jobs being done out of department for another one, and then being paid back for the labor or stuff like that?
This system, did you understand?
Yes, well, it it depends which system we go. Uh, most of them do have a a cost project, uh, cost management for projects, for grants, uh, contracts.
But what I what I'm looking at is, is, let's say, uh, Public Works takes their accrue and goes and does work for the police department. Well, his labor and his budget's gonna get hit for those hours.
Correct.
His is not. So he now has, will this system allow him to charge him for the work?
That that would be like a project management system?
Yeah, so his budget doesn't get hit for that.
Correct, and and initially, it it would, but if we have the, depends on which system we go with. Uh, the project managers should be able to handle that, and we can charge out at the end. Uh, being considered the se- the example you're setting is just still general fund monies, it just transferred from one, but it'll.
Yeah, but this is without transfer, more like a work order system.
Correct.
So that we don't, you know, we don't go back to like what happened here, uh, what was it, last year, where we, that one of the departments was out doing other stuff, and we didn't know. And so it it tracks the cost that is being.
I I imagine project managers should not do allow to be to do that.
I thought we just stopped doing that in the budget.
Trashing.
Yeah, we just stopped doing that. That's when we revised the whole budgets this time, we took that out, where departments were charging each other, because they were doing.
Wouldn't ever never did. There was never a charge.
Currently, we're not.
Yeah, right now, we're not, but before.
But we never.
Before John went in and fixed it, I thought they were.
No. They never did.
Yeah, yeah, I I'll just comment briefly, Victor, if I may.
Right.
Um, uh, Mayor Obrana, I I understand exactly the the uh the application you're talking about, and that is called a work order system. So that uh we can do cost accounting and job job costing across any department organization, so we never have subsidies. Um, that that we're actually charging based on actual staff time. Uh, the other current system we we that we have doesn't allow us to do that, but uh we we need to move towards a more accurate cost accounting uh system, uh, so that instead of just coming up with estimates of, and then transferring monies out, we actually do it on an actual basis throughout the fiscal year. And the new uh E R P systems that we're looking at has work orders, has job costing, has purchase orders and encircuses. Um, it's a real, you know, twenty first century uh s- uh software.
No, John, when John came in, he's the one that took that money back. So it was the uh H R was getting paid back. Uh, city manager was getting paid back. Everybody was getting paid back the works that they had done. And so that was that was something they had to go back and track. And so this system will track it automatically and give it back. It'll pay for those.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's consequence like that. So we're not into the new system, so I couldn't give you that much of it, but uh. It it's it's gonna be a lot harder than what we normally do, so.
And it'll be less staff time. I'll just try to figure.
It should it should uh be more efficient as well, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, moving on to next slide, um, our fund balance at, um, total for the city currently stands over fifteen million dollars. This is an increase of three million over Q two. And for Q three general fund, uh, total has five point four million uh on the balance. Uh, next slide is um fund balance and cash reserves, cash flows. Currently, uh, at the same point in time, uh, this quarter, we're at a net um revenue of one point one million compared to previous year. Uh, and that was the that's six hundred and forty four thousand from Q two, so we are moving in the positive uh direction. But I know at the end of the year, those symbols says that they're they're lagging and our kid are four quarters, and so that we expect that to go much more closer to Q two numbers. Moving on to our enterprise funds, our enterprise funds for water. Uh, we currently are at a net revenue of seven hundred and five thousand. Uh, this is a little bit lower than uh we came in at Q two, which is a hundred uh seven hundred and seven. Um, for Q three budget versus actual, ending June thirty twenty twenty three, this is still the capital improvement cost of two point three million. Uh, and bond principles of standing diesel that uh it's attached on, attachment seven of your packet. Currently, the water fund has a catch line of seven million at the end of uh March thirty first of the fourth. For our wastewater uh enterprise fund, um, currently sits at net revenue at the third quarter for five hundred and eighty seven thousand. This is a hundred thousand more than Q two. For Q three, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty four, the amounts percent only operating numbers. Bond principal of lending uh vehicles, again, it's attachment, attachment seven of your packet. The wastewater fund cash balances sits currently at eleven point eight million at the end uh third quarter. Moving on to our C F Bs, our community facilities districts. Uh, this is uh probably one of the big bigger changes you can see, uh, at Q two, we're all negative because the money hadn't come in. Uh, now that the payments are in, uh, you can see all our parks, our C F D parks are on the positive side. Um, I just won't go into detail of the numbers, uh, but if you have any questions, uh. Keeping with C F Bs, um, the fund bias for each ones is also uh a big difference. Uh, last quarter, we're uh half a million, right now, we sit at uh two point. Two point one million for fund analysis for all C F Bs. We do have some uh liabilities for development, uh reimbursement, and specifically for brand C F B. For nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and Monterey Park for two point three million dollars. Both of them uh are set, our current pay schedule is set around to twenty thirty seven. Some of the painting items that uh came up during um third quarter. Uh, first of all, is uh the Mayfield uh C F Bs that may have a a positive momentum depending on the legal um issue currently at hand. For the S T P L point seventy six, it does have a six hundred fifteen dollar deficit, which would likely impact other capital funds. The Fund eighty six, the per capita fund has a deficit of two hundred nineteen thousand deficit, which again will impact other capital funds. Um, other funds have a total of three hundred and eighty combined, and most of these funds we have been carrying a negative balance for about ten years. So this is something that the city has already been in place, and I do wanna track down with John and see what we can do with uh those negative uh negative balances.
Victor, I would just like to add that this conversation that we've had for six months with the council is that, obviously, it'd be nice to take these off, these negative, these deficits off the balance sheet at the time that the Mayfield C F B has worked out, that'll be a benefit to the general fund. All these other capital projects that went negative, um, it it's 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 challenging to accept the fact that the general fund's gonna have to pay for it, but maybe this can all be cleaned up as a package when Mayfield gets cleaned up, but um in the end, it's gonna be a general fund impact. Uh, because to try to go back ten years and trace all these capital funds uh would probably be too much work.
What's the S T P L fund seventy six?
Tony, Tony Lobos remembered that the what that stands for, but it's some kind of a street improvement uh grant fund from the state.
And what about the per capita fund eighty six?
Same thing, it's a state uh grant fund that that was overspent many years ago, and the deficit has just been carried on the books over over time. Uh, but because of that, you know, that deficit goes back many years. Uh, there's really no other fund that can make these funds back to zero other than the general fund. Uh, so sadly, this will be a fiscal impact on the general fund, but we've kind of been hoping for the Mayfield workout to return more than what we see here in the capital funds, so that it's a net uh zero impact on the general fund.
So essentially, it's been like an accounting error that nobody's fixed for ten years?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
It's it's really easy to clean it up. It's just a matter of transferring general fund cash to all these funds that have deficit, but it comes out of the general fund and. Uh but it comes out of the general fund and we've just been trying to see if there's any other way that we can have. You know, a special revenue fund make these funds whole as opposed to the general fund, but. Uh as you know, we're still trying to get the auditors to finish fiscal year twenty twenty two, that it's just been delay after delay. Uh and so we're hoping that maybe through those audits, something would come out to clean these. Flush these deficits out so that the general fund doesn't have to be impacted.
And what's the priority on the audit? Uh they they finally started with the audit for twenty one, twenty two. Um our estimated deadline uh to receive uh was the end of May. They're pushing for June, but they're kind of settling the end of May, so hopefully uh. We get that final result and we're supposed to start the meeting on the twenty three, twenty three.
So so question for you, I'm going back to to the STPL funds. Aren't those street funds that we got through ICTC? This was back in the day. STPL?
That's the that's the old uh program.
Uh huh.
Uh but it also went out, I don't know which budget it was.
Trying to remember the funds that this was spent on.
I I could I could get more detail for probably for for those funds.
And then the, wow, does everyone remember these terms?
So yes, sustainable transportation planning grants.
Now STBG now. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so. Moving on, um. For fiscal year twenty twenty four, the city continues to be on target um at the end of the third quarter for the budget. Uh we we remain alert, um. Calling our HCL consultants on the indicators for the sales tax. Um which have been lagging, so um we had a good uh third quarter. Uh and we'll look into property tax. Um one thing we are researching and. We got our finance manager got some answer on the cannabis, which happened late and. Payments lower than usual, they switched ERPs, so they haven't provided payment for a couple of months, so. We're also expecting money from the the cannabis uh fund.
They haven't paid us for a couple of months?
Yeah.
What is that?
They have a newer ERP, so they're struggling with their payments. So it it was kind of mysterious, so Diana finally got in touch with them today, she got an answer finally today. So hopefully this that's settled by this one. But also the actual payments were half as expected for current year. From prior years, so also maybe another cannabis shop opened up. Uh another cities, so that may impact them as well. So it's impacting our sales tax.
Look at the uh what's being done, I know that we have it in the part of the CUP that we can look at. Books all anytime we want.
No, not not at this one, yeah, so. We were wondering, first of all, we wanted to follow up payment, so we got an answer that then once. They pick it up, I don't know if that is adding back the actual mark, which I doubt it. But uh we have a trend that it's been less for this year than prior year.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense. There's another cannabis shop that opened up in a neighboring city, so.
I I think I mentioned two or one or one in.
One's already closed though.
Yeah, oh, okay. So so that may be it, so.
Should be back, all back up.
I mean, on the twentieth, the last month, they sold right around stores, so.
Some people drive in line at four o'clock on that four, whatever day, but four sixteen or.
Yeah, they were getting ready.
Four twenty, yeah, they they were lined up.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, no problem, um so. Uh basically, um I kind of went ahead on on the audit, uh I already get the update, um. They're working on it, uh find you should have it by the end of the month, uh hopefully. And party budgets are so something that John established to make any changes and updates uh for you guys to give counsel in.
Yeah, this is really helpful. Thank you. Thank you, guys. I know this is a lot of work and.
Yeah.
Having to do it every quarter.
And and you're you're not helping a lot, so I know John's been uh being a great help.
Yeah, I I really appreciate all the work that goes into this. Uh for us as a council, it's like. When you only get a budget update, really during budget season, it's kind of hard. For us to kind of see where everything's at.
Yeah, when we start seeing numbers and all, all we see is a budget, we're like, what?
Well.
At least now we get.
You don't you don't get the budget project next week, so three budgets.
Can we follow up and see where our intake is, our our payments and all that from cannabis is, maybe the next one, just a little?
Yes.
Quick update?
I'll follow up on that. Any other things?
Other questions? Oh, appreciate the hard work. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Oh, sorry, uh we got a, yeah.
I make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty four dash nineteen. Resolution of City Council for City of Imperial, California, amending the fiscal year. Twenty twenty two or twenty twenty three, twenty four budget as of the third quarter in March thirty first.
Okay, got a motion from Burnwood?
Second.
And a second, but I'm struck. Uh please both.
He did all the work.
Councilmember Burnwood?
Yes.
Councilmember Beza Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Amparano?
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Awesome. Uh thank you very much for all all that. Now moving on to uh D reports, we'll start with uh. Department report, Mr. Mora. Mr. Dale?
I have a few things here. Um staff's been removing some of the weeds from eighty six corridor, you might have seen. It's taken a lot of time and effort from staff and so we're looking at potentially for next budget. Us putting in a proposal to have weed or basement service come in and spray these things. I think what that would do is free up staff. To work on streets and other things and it's also cheaper. I did a quick estimate of how much. Cost per uh staff to do the work and it looks like it's about double the cost, more or less depending on how the bids come. So so we're looking at that potentially to save some some time next fiscal year. And so that's one of the things we're working on. Um for this coming month, what we're also looking at is putting some stop the head signs on Aitken Road. Um right before Sando would Sando would Glen. Because there's been some complaints that the stop sign is not as visible as it could be. So put paint stop ahead on the road and put stop sign, stop ahead signs. And in it that we we may look at some additional measures.
That one doesn't have, I'm sorry, don't mean to interrupt you, that one doesn't have flashes on it, does it?
That one doesn't, the one that they put that on morning glory trail, that's where the kids run.
Is that the one where the dirt is always in front of it?
Yeah, I think so.
So we'll be looking at doing that. Also, uh ci- city manager and community development director, we we all, we met with Republic. And we're looking at, we're talking to them about their street sweeping services. And so. Um so what we're asking for is what the other cities do receive. And that is a report with the GPS trail of where the street sweeper went, the speed. And all those kind of things, so they promised that they're gonna start sending that as much. Uh so that we can report if there's any complaints, yes, that was there, that's made. Um and they can prove that they were there and the speed they were going, so we're looking at that um and hopefully we'll start receiving that soon.
You know, it's funny, the only reason they stop on my street is when I stand on the curb and watch it. Well, I mean, how else are we gonna get him to get him to sweep the streets if the, you know, nobody's. He comes by like he's drag racing and nothing's sweeping up. I mean, I stand there, he'll he'll go by twice and do it. Hey, thanks, it's clean, then you can go.
Only I've ever seen him come by my house.
I mean.
I thought I heard it, but it was a different truck. Even checked my green.
I'm telling you. It's like the Easter bunny, you go out there and it's gone.
So one of the things we have, we need, we we're working on internally is updating our, what they call the curb miles. And that's the miles that this street sweeper goes. It hasn't been updated for many years, so. There may be additional costs when we find out how many miles that we actually have. We may have to um renegotiate that, but. At this moment, right now, we're just looking at getting that, yes.
So and and not to interrupt again with the street sweeper, a couple of months, I think I I. It's been a while, I think after before the first of the year, I sent out that we hadn't, uh residents lived over at the uh. The homes right there off of Banta. What's that development? Can't remember the name of it. Yeah, Russell Court, that they had never been through there. That they had never been through there, come to find out, I guess they weren't on the list or something. I talked to George and he thought like, yeah, they had never been turned in and they were never going by. So um I don't know what are the developments are not on the list? This is straight from Republic.
Honestly, I'm convinced none are. At this point, they never come.
You know, are we looking at the ones over here off Second Street? Are we looking at the new Victorias? Are we looking at Heritage? Are they going through all these? Do they have the map to include those miles on there? Um, you know, thank you. Sorry, don't mean to interrupt.
No, no, thank you, thank you for it. So yeah, that is uh an item of importance to to get that figured out. Tag along with that, we also were talking about this desert garage subdivision. Where the road is sort of falling apart before it should, um and it's full of gravel. There's other roads in the city that have that same issue. One of them is Cross Road in front of Cross Elementary. And so um. In the desert garage, what our plan was, was to have the street sweeper come. We have already had it set up and. And the residents have been notified, we're gonna sweep all the gravel off and then. Our plan is to come in and put a slurry seal on top of it for to prevent any further unraveling. Well, in part, mostly in part, thanks to our community development director contacted the developer and. He in turn contacted um the contractor who built that and there. No guarantees yet, but it looks like they're possibly gonna come in and actually. Repay those sections, so I'm hoping that will be the case. It's not a guarantee at this point. But it seems like it might, and Cross Road might be one of those, so we're gonna continue on that, make that hap- try to make that happen.
Right.
Um so that's that, and then also on the hotel, I don't know, wanna talk about this, but apparent they wanna open sometime in July. So they're working really, really hard on installing the water pipelines, Imperial Avenue in front of the hotel. And uh Neckel Road will be next, and I think that will be. One of the things that we wanna make sure that we start telling the public is that road will be closed for about a month.
That would be Neckel.
Neckel Road and they're they're trying to, they're scheduled it so when, as we referred to earlier, when school is is out. I'm not sure if that will be the case because of the the schedule um is really tight, but we're trying to push for that and I think our. Well, the director is also working on that, right?
Yeah, do we know if we reached out to IID because I know they write that training bank quite a bit and that they can maybe. Go around all that stuff to get through what they need, you know what I'm talking about?
And then the water plant project's still ongoing, GAC's, uh it looks like a note, also July as a completion date, if all goes well. Maybe August, so a lot of things going on. Repairs at the wastewater treatment plant, we're continuing with the crack ceiling. Going as much as we can on that, um doing some repairs, some remodeling in in the offices to create more space. For more, now we have more employees, there's a lot of things going on.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Appreciate that report. Thank you.
Um so our department is excited to announce that this Friday, our summer recreation activity guide will open. Um so that'll open this Friday and then registration for all those uh programs will open at six o'clock. Um so if you have kids, you can sign them up this Friday. Um and then we also have our last event of the season. It will be in the park after dark, that'll be Saturday, May eighteenth at either park from six to ten p.m.
And where's sign up at?
Um so they can sign up online on practice or they can also come into the parks recreation office, we do have a paper application.
At six P M or six A?
A M or P M?
Yeah.
This is like the law for Monday.
Is this something that gets advertised like social media or website?
So we do have a a video scheduled to release both on Thursday, kind of letting everybody know and then another video on Friday, kind of recapping all the. Programs that we do so that we don't get um posted everywhere and we'll have a guide on the city website as well.
Is this something we can push out to the Chamber of Commerce?
We do contact the Ch- Chamber of Commerce, we have all of our bits and stuff and that's definitely something.
So they can, part of our membership. Use it. Thank you. Appreciate that, uh Mr. Strah.
Well, harder gear, hardware is in place, we're expecting them to show up next week to complete the configuration and probably following the training for everybody. And that's pretty much uh that's enough for you.
Thank you. Chief?
So Friday is the three about. It's at the courthouse from six to eight, sorry, seven to eight. And unfortunately, it's at the same time at the same point of appreciation, so I don't know if people would have the opportunity to try to be exposed to schedule everybody.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Keep answering?
I have nothing to make.
Do you want to think that?
Nothing else, um.
You already gave us all the good news, right? Miss Ben?
Uh yes, so to add to Victoria's uh recreation uh summer programs, I'd like to introduce our new hires. Uh we have twelve new hires uh this period and they are all part of our rec- uh parts of recreation. Uh so our seasonal staff, so our first new hire is Jared Bedola, uh Recreation Leader Two. And we have Drew Brennan, Recreation Leader One. Savannah Hardinets, Recreation Leader Two. Angelique Graham, uh lifeguard three. Uh Jordan Green, uh Recreation Leader One. Audrey Lopez, Recreation Leader One. Areli Ortega, Recreation Leader Three. Violet Platero, Recreation Leader One. Andrew Pruitt, Recreation Leader One. Gabrielle Kim Reyes, Recreation Leader One. Juliana Ramirez, Recreation Leader Three. And Diego Sanchez, Recreation Leader One.
I need to bring this on board. Forever memorialized. Uh and so we're excited to see what they do through the summer programs and um like Chief mentioned, our employee appreciation is this Friday, we're very excited. Um see everybody there.
And where's it at?
It's gonna be at the Ivy Food Bank in Imperial Grove, uh it's the outdoor space behind.
And just out of curiosity, like I know most of our rec programs are, you know, from like teenagers or high school kids, do we get a lot of applicants for those or?
We get a certain amount uh of applicants, yeah, so we, I think we hired about half. This year we hired fourteen recreation leaders and twelve lifeguards, but I think we have like definitely over forty applicants for rec leaders alone. Fourteen like a hundred, twenty to thirty for lifeguards.
More than last year, right?
Yes, so we're actually very fortunate, had a lot more than last year.
Great, thank you. All right, um moving on to uh our city attorney. Um Michelle?
Uh just like to say thank you again for recognizing myself and other city clerks for city clerks week, appreciate it.
Welcome. Um, Mr. Bitch Martinez, I'm sorry, hold on. Just just read a good last time, did it last time?
I I was hoping.
Cut myself.
Uh actually, I have nothing to report.
You were gonna let me go and be like, and I had a whole report for you. Okay, so now, let's work it out.
Um there is a margarita challenge tomorrow at Imperial Food Bank, the Grove by Imperial Recreation Chamber of Commerce. Thirty dollar tickets, they're available, I think there's teams and you can pick your, I like how we do it. Our thing, you can pick the best drink that you like, so there's bites and some margaritas.
Awesome.
Awesome, so I was able to attend the quickback car wash um. Gr- or ribbon cutting, um it was really cool. They even have their own theme song and I was thinking like. They, yeah, it was a good event, uh they had taco cards, tons of quick wax swag that my kids definitely love, so. Uh look forward to seeing that business thrive. Also, uh Imperial Valley Healthcare District. Uh I'm on the chair of that board and I just want everyone to know where I'm in a public hearing on May ninth at six P M at the El Centro City Council Chambers. Um and it's actually the first draft of the district boundaries. Um and it's actually the first draft of the district boundaries uh for the seven uh voting districts that you'll have for Imperial Valley Healthcare District for under A B nine one eight, so if you wanna attend or look at that, that's something that I think uh should take a point out.
Cool. Thank you, Tucker?
Previous Wednesday, myself and Chief Ralph went to the N A F to accept our photos from the Blue Angels to the city, so now Dennis has gotta get them framed, framed. I got them, I got them in good hands, be transported, they had security.
Let letting you get framed up.
How many of those really have been framed?
Well, there's, you're on over city hall.
Nice.
You have a few that are ready.
It's just going. Anything else, Tucker?
That's it.
All right, um for me, I got to attend on uh not this Sunday, the Sunday before, the Ivy Coliseum uh Business Expo. So they put their entire parking lot, invited little small businesses throughout, uh mostly Imperial, some of the central surrounding areas um into Imperial so that they could show what they have to showcase, so. A lot of good businesses, a lot of party rentals, a lot of party supplies, uh backdrops, food. But but uh just a lot of different stuff, so it was great, walk around and see what was available, so it was neat. A lot of people started small businesses, a lot of new little businesses started up, so it was great to see. Um like Katie, uh attended Quickback with Katie Chief, uh Mac and certain uh Shapers, it was cool, different, so. Uh I C T C had a meeting uh last Wednesday, one of the big things that we're talking about is uh electrification coming in and what's happening, uh I know we're looking at doing that within our city. Uh but just the big uh problems that we're having throughout the state with electrification, so. Uh that is on the horizon for a lot of things, so just know it's it's coming. Like Katie, I got to meet my first meeting with Labco um with an attorney. And so, not fun, but it is part of nine eighteen, so that's what we're there for. Huh? Yeah, oh, long story short, Labco's getting sued, so. And I'm not even, haven't even attended my first meeting enough, I'm on it, so yay. Yeah, so uh with that, um this Saturday, if anybody's available, they are uh Gravity Cheer and Stunt is doing their grand opening. I showed up this last Saturday with our certificate, and I'm sitting in the parking lot, and nobody's there, and I'm going, where's everybody at? And I look and it's like, huh, the Ford. So I was a week early, but I showed up. Um so I will be there this Saturday, uh it's at two o'clock uh right off Wall Road, so I'm going to that. Um tomorrow is the Margarita Cook uh uh Challenge, um. I will be a judge, so wish me luck on that one, and I uh look forward to it. And then our employee appreciation, definitely look forward to that, hoping to see everybody there, so. Uh with that, thanks for all the hard work, they definitely see the work happening on the highway, so all the crews working, everybody's doing a great job, so people, yes.
With Mother's Day coming up, we won't be meeting again before then, so a good Mother's Day ahead of time, in our Mexican Mother's Day.
Oh, that's true, huh?
All our moms.
Yeah, yeah, have a good Mother's Day, make sure you guys get.
Have you get filed?
Yeah. So with that, uh I'll return our meeting and call at eight thirty four, thank you.